Okay, welcome, Tenaka Katoa, and welcome to the second day of the People's Inquiry into the effects and the impacts of toxic chemicals and poisons on people, wildlife and our environment. And it's great to have everybody together again for another full day of testimony from a diverse range of people who are sharing their expertise and their experiences for the People's Inquiry. We're going to start with the karakia. And I'll just hand over to Hira to do a short karakia for us. Your mute's on.
Tenaka Katoa, kainoi tātou. E iomatuā ko tātou hehopu mo te hau ora me te oranga o te iwi katoa. Ngakarehe katoa, ngangara katoa, nganu katoa, ngahere katoa, ngawai katoa, ngarongoa katoa. Chakina to tātou faia papa tuanuku, chakina ranginui, chakina tangaroa, arahina mātou, chakina mātou to tātou tamiriki katoa. Haumie, huiie, tahekei. No ra ra tenara wātukatoa katoa, nā mai, piki maharamai katoa katoa.
Thank you, Hira, for that karakia. I'm just going to go through very briefly now about the housekeeping. Not in full detail because we've already, we've already gone through the Zoom housekeeping, but just a quick reminder to people about the way that we're going to run the day today. And first of all, most importantly, this is being recorded and at some point the recording will be archived on our website and available publicly. So with that in mind, it's important that, you know, we're respectful and and observant of the, of the fact that it's recorded. The schedule we like to keep to timings and we'll do a brief overview at the end of the day. The chat function, we're not using other than for Hira to engage with the various pieces of information that we touch on during the day. But if you do have a question, please put it in the Q and A and we'll endeavour to answer it either now or or at some point in the future, we'll get back to you. We're very aware, especially after yesterday, of how emotional it is to be sharing these stories, these very personal stories. And so there are support mechanisms available. There's a list of relevant help lines available, again, that'll be shared on our chat function and also on our website. And if you do feel the need to share your own experiences, you haven't done that so far, then please do get in contact with the People's Inquiry and share those with us so that we can add those to our growing database of information. So the support and advocacy is available there. A quick reminder that we are unfunded, we're all volunteers, including the commissioners. And so we do have a give a little page, so if you wanted to contribute, anything is very gratefully received to help us on our shoestring budget for costs, administrative costs, like running the website, et cetera. So again, the details of that are on our website. So yeah, at its, at its heart, this is about creating a safe and respectful forum for everybody to share their experiences. And so there's, it's totally without judgment and all we ask is that our, that everybody listens with respect and compassion with a, you know, with a view to making some progress in different ways to help people that have been affected by these poisons. So I think, I think that's about it in terms of recapping on the housekeeping. When it's time for the speakers to speak, we will enable your microphone and your camera. And if you wanted to screen share, then that's available as well. Yeah, and as I say, if there's any questions, then please ask them in our Q and A facility. And so I'm now just going to hand over to, actually, I'll just run through quickly the agenda for the day, shall I? So we're going to start with Hira, who's going to talk about the Mataranga Maori and the treaty and the EPA breaches. We're then going to hear from Sally Steadman talking about the the relevance of valid consultation in terms of authorising chemicals to be spread on land. We're then going to speak to representatives of the Sawmill Workers Against Poisons Group, which would be particularly interesting. We know a bit about that. Then we're going to break for lunch at about midday for an hour. And then we've got an afternoon of various speakers, including Dr Wendy Pond, Rihanna, Frances from the Coromandel, Marcus James is going to talk to us. Then I'm going to do a short presentation on my research findings. And then Cathy and Clyde, Cathy White and Clyde Graff are going to talk about collecting evidence for the conservation, regional councils and the DHBs. We're going to finish at about 20 past four approximately, so we'll try and keep to time. And so yes, if we can say a brief hello from all of us and if the commissioners want to say a brief hello and greetings to everybody.
Kia ora everybody, really nice to be here again today. Our committees will switch off in a minute and then hand things over to Ursula and the commissioners to start things. We really look forward to another interesting day.
Kia ora everybody, really, really pleased to be part of the People's Inquiry and I feel it's definitely showing this in the need.
We can't, we can't hear you very well, Stephanie, so you may have to adjust your microphone.
Don't worry, I'll just say hi.
That's better, great. Hannah, did you want to say hello? Okay. And a quick hello from the commissioners, Catherine, did you want to say hello?
Morning Nakoto, I'm just looking forward to another day of really interesting and helpful submissions.
Thank you, and Tom?
Well, I'm looking forward to a day of hearing the, and again, I just have to emphasise how much I appreciate these witnesses who who come forward and I know the courage that it takes to come before a microphone and tell a story that has had such an impact on your life, how much courage that takes and appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Did you want to say a quick word, Mariel?
Atamari everyone, many of you who are presenting today, I know from, from personal or other walks of life, my work. And it's lovely, it'd be lovely to hear from you all and everybody that is presenting today, I know of your work and I honour and respect and it'll be great to hear from you. Kia kaha.
Emma, did you want to say a quick word?
Aia, kia ora, kia ora tata, kia ora commissioners, piki mai, kake mai, fakatau mai, ko tātū nai katoa, ki rongi tareo, kaaringa o te rā, no ra ra, haare mai, nā mai, fakatau mai rā, tenaka tā.
So now we're going to hand over to Hira, who's going to talk to us about the Mataranga Maori and the treaty and the EPA breaches. Thank you, Hira.
Tenaka Katoa, tenaitakumihiaroha kina komi, Hannah. Ihakarongo mai tenai ata, tenara wātukatoa, ngā te komiti fakahaere o PI 2021. Tenaitakumihiaroha kina iwi katoa e ma takitaki mai, tenara wātukatoa. Ko hirohunapō kalahana toku engua, no ngātikene ngāpohi ahau keitataho toku mama, no ngāti rākuame tearo ahau keitataho toku papa. No ra ra tenaitakumihiaroha ki a katoa katoa, ko tāi mai tenai hui chino hakahira hira o tātou te iwi katoa, no ra ra ngāmihiki a katoa katoa. So I'm Hira and before I start my presentation, I've just acknowledged our commissioners and our committee and also all you who have taken the time to join us in our hearing. I'm, I'm a healer, I work in the area of healing, I come from a background of a whole range of areas. Before I begin, I'll just introduce and explain a bit about myself. I come from a background of having worked in youth, social, community work and for a number of government departments. I then worked in the area of policy analysis and strategic planning and strategic developmental policies. So I could see the insights and internal operations of legislation, policies and practices. And then I moved into community development, areas of community resource development, empowering communities to become a lot more self-sufficient in developing marakai and sustainable community developments in those areas. I then moved on into the field after that of strategic advising a number of organisations. And then I decided, along the way, I am also a fully qualified and trained councillor with a perspective in the tapa famalu of the tahaheeninga or taha tina, taha waidua, tataha whano. So I've trained in all those areas there. I have, I own Rongoa, which is a holistic Maori healing service, working with individuals, working with whanau, working with communities, advising community organisations, advising different entities on tikanga Maori. So I also work in the area of Rongoa, gathering plants and assisting people with the Rongoa and their personal wellbeing. So I was also raised by the old people, the alko matua kia, who taught me, even though I look in a modern, you know, where we all wear clothes and live in modern houses, that I'm a very traditional person, I was brought up the old way by alko matua and kia. That is the heart of who I am, is the tikanga, the maoranga Maori, which they installed in me for the sake of all people, for the sake of all nature, all the natural environment and resources. My ko matua and kia only spoke to me in Maori and me and my whananga and we understood the fakapapa, the genealogical relationship to ranginui, te iomatuā kore, our creator. Ko iomatuā kore, nananenga mea katoa, the beginning, the end, from where all we all came from. And that is how, from a maoranga, so what is maoranga Maori? Maoranga Maori is a body of knowledge that we inherit through our tupuna, our ancestors, through our ko matua and kia. Indigenous peoples worldwide, ancient indigenous peoples worldwide were inherited with the knowledge, the maoranga of how to live in harmony and in peace with our natural environment. We understood our interconnected relationship with every realm of the natural world, of the cosmos, because we are related through fakapapa. Iomatuā kore is our creator. From io comes our mare kura and our fatu kura. Mare kura is the female essence, fatu kura is the male essence. And then we come down, we have ranginui, which is the male essence, and then we have papa tuanuku, which is the female essence. Then we come down to our tupuna, our matua tupuna, our ancestors, our grandfather, which is the male essence, and then we have our our kia who are the female essence, and then we come down to us. Now, within our being, we have our vital organs, our jaw, our brains, our ngāko, our hearts, if we, all our vital organs are jaw. One is the tamatane, one is the tamawahine. They are upheld by iomatuā kore through the mare kura coming through ranginui and papa tuanuku. Our ko matua, our ancestors, and down to our mum and dad, to us. When iomatuā kore created us, he brought the cosmos, he brought the different elements, tāfiri maki, the wind, papa tuanuku, the earth, to become who we are. We are genealogically related to the cosmos, the wind, the trees, ngahere, the way, the waters, the fenwa, the soil. When a mother has her child, and the fenwa, the placenta is the fenwa. So when the child is born, the fenwa, the placenta, is who had returned back to papa tuanuku, the spiritual mother from where we came. These are the things that we have to remember, where we came from. Over the course of being westernised and colonised, a lot of their thinking has been displaced and replaced. Ko matou he iwi waidua, iheke mai iomatuā kore. Na ko matou he iwi kaichaki. We are a spiritual people descended directly from iomatuā kore. We are therefore ngā kaichaki, the guardians of all our natural environments and people. Down as kaichaki, when anything or anyone enters that natural environment and harms it in any way through exploitation, through destruction, through poisoning, through pollution, we have an inherent obligation and responsibility to challenge them directly. It is an inherent obligation and responsibility as kaichaki to challenge them and have no fear in doing that, because we understand who we are and how we are connected to the natural world. So that's who I am, that's how I believe and that's how I've grown up. So commissioners, I sent you through my written submission and you'll all have copies of that and you will all have read the recommendations that I have. So if you have any questions with regards to any component of that, you are free to ask me those questions. The first recommendation that, as you will see through my submission, is the dismantling of the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, previously known as UMA. That is the first, is the dismantling of the EPA. And I will speak to those why it needs to be dismantled. The EPA has breached every thing that is moral. It has, the so-called EPA, previously known as the Environmental Risk Management Authority, has breached every human and environmental aspect of our existence. They've breached tikanga Maori, which is the first loa of Aotearoa, of New Zealand. Tikanga Maori is the first loa of Aotearoa, they've breached that. They've also breached the taritio waitangi. And I'll go through and explain how they've done that. They've also breached every protection clause within the Hazno Act, the hazardous substance and new organisms act. And what they've done is they've delegated their responsibility to work safe in different bodies to be able to manage the Hazno Act, 1996. And I'll go through that, why. They've breached the human rights act. They've patronised Maori by creating Te Kaio two, with all due arahani respect to the esteemed Maori leaders within Te Kaio two, the Environmental Protection Agency. The mana allies with the iwi and the mana fenwa and local community people with irrelevant knowledge, skills and expertise to be able to determine themselves and assess and assume themselves what hazardous substances or new organisms can and should be allowed within their rohe, within their tribal area and community, not the EPA. Never the EPA ever again. They've done so much damage to our environment. The EPA and the New Zealand Government, which have allowed it to occur, are destroying our food sources, all our kai. Everything that we need as human beings to survive, they are attacking and destroying our food. Hunting. Our medicines, the Rongoa, they're poisoning it. There are other, more humane and natural means of managing credit pests and managing weed control, you know, natural, organic weed control. So I guess those are the recommendations that I've put through to the commissioners. The EPA needs to be dismantled and replaced by the community because of the damage it's already, you do not allow a body or entity that has destroyed nature and harmed people to continue to exist and believe it has the right and authority to continue in its damage, no. I've put a recommendation through on behalf of all the people that I've worked with in the healing area and who are reliant on growing marakai, their foods, without being poisoned. I'm speaking on their behalf as well, for the ones I have worked with, that the EPA needs to be dismantled. I also would like a greater focus on natural, more organic ways of pest control and to prohibit all future aerial drops of 1080, that has to stop. That has to stop. You want to turn off my phone? That has to stop, the aerial drops of 1080 have to stop. We have to be committed to this, to do this all together. It's not about how or when it is we have to work together to put an end to the destruction of nature, of ourselves, you know. I think of all those people, all our children who have died of cancer, of leukaemia, of all the carcinogenic health conditions and of all the poisons, that people sometimes don't even realise that they've been poisoned within their home and within their workplace, how the toxic chemicals have saturated their skin, eroded the proteins and nutrients within their blood and eventually within the immune system, that they've got to a stage where those cells have become so saturated and eroded and destroyed, which are then genetically transferred to future generations. So it's hard for people, it may not show in one generation, but it'll show down the line that a deformed cell is a result of the poison, the carcinogenic components which have absorbed the body. So I guess at this point, I'll just leave it here and open it up to the commissioners. I'm a he. Any questions?
Oh yeah. First of all, I mean, the thing that strikes me about your recommendations is, when I remember yesterday, the recommendations were, how can we get the EPA and others to, to follow the regulations, you know? Which is pretty tiny ask. And what you're recommending is much more radical. The Latin word is radix, meaning root, going right down to the root of the problem. And so I appreciate that a lot. Your second recommendation, the one right after destruction of the EPA says to be regionally replaced, so my question is asking you to say a little more about this. To be regionally replaced by iwi members who have strong background in environmental stuff and also community representatives with backgrounds like that. Can you, can you expand a little on that recommendation?
So, tenaka quitop, so I guess it goes back to tikanga Maori and then tikanga Maori, the iwi or mana fenua of a different tribal area, they have the authority there. They have the authority there. So it goes back to them. And I think most people know that a lot of iwi already have fully trained people within the science and environmental fields who are coming through the universities and the manas. So I'm, I'm saying that that's where the mana, the mana, to make the decision must return back to them and people within their community, the local community themselves, who have those environmental skills. Maori are natural conservationists, we're natural navigators, we're natural scientists, we've been that way all our lives, yeah.
So this would not, you're not imagining an organisation that would cover the entirety of New Zealand, the whole landmass, but, but communities based, iwi based, is that right?
Yes, and I think if, if, if you're familiar with Aotearoa, is that although each iwi and each community is different, I think we have a commonality to protect and preserve the health and wellbeing of the people within their community. But that voice has been oppressed by the government and the regional council for decades. It's time to come forward, yeah. Thank you for that. Are there any more questions?
Kia ora, Hira, there's some comments to start with. I completely agree with you about the EPA and how it operates. The problem with the EPA is actually the legislation that set it up in the first place, that and the political rule that puts in charge of the EPA, people who have invested interest in industry and not in the community. And they do, they do have some Maori consultation, but it's token. And they have no consultation with anybody else in the government and in the community at all. So I, you know, I totally agree, it needs to be replaced, the legislation behind it needs to be replaced. I have one concern and that is about the, the, the management of some of these pests and, for example, being regionalised and there being no national body to oversee and coordinate what's happening. I take for example guava moth. Guava moth is a terrible problem for orchardists, mainly in the north, but it also increasingly further south in New Zealand. And I don't think, I don't, and we haven't solved the problem even for organic growers. And I, I'm concerned that regionalising decisions on how to manage something like that would not be terribly effective. So I just wonder if you could comment on how persuade me that regionalising those kind of decisions would help us.
What would you suggest, Mariel, to replace the EPA?
I would suggest a complete overhaul of the legislation, the bodies it would set up and fundamentally the philosophy behind it.
Yes.
Um, and, but, and, and I totally agree, there needs to be more regional involvement. But I kind of feel there still needs to be some kind of national over oversight and, and management. And I don't know, how would you feel about that?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I mean, we should be happy with that. I think nationally, absolutely, I, I, I just, I guess I was just coming from a grassroots perspective. On it, I, Maria, I think we've got it, that national and then it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But thank, thanks for that, um, Hira, and Muriel also, uh, no, I think the excellent suggestions in terms of the whole fundamental. You know, the ethos, the whole cosmology is wrong, it's turned on its head. Um, I do, I had that concern, I thought, um, look at what, no. So obviously, if things were in Maori control under traditional authority, then that would be different. But if you devolve things to regions today, they're not going to be in that kind of control. And so you look at what regional, say councils or regional political bodies today have done. When things have been devolved regionally and that region will decide to, oh, we don't need strict water standards because we want to use nitrate fertilizer. You know what I mean? So I, and I totally understand where you're coming from as a pragmatic reason. I wonder whether you, yeah, I was gonna ask a similar one, could there be a um, uh, a recommendation related to, now today it would be, you would say, a treaty based relationship. Um, uh, in terms of that would be seen to be fair and equal, right? And a treaty based relationship with better principles underlying. So at the moment, like Kaihau two um, is just an advisory body. And even when they advise for, you know, against, and pesticides is one that, you know, of course I've looked at. Uh, even when they do, they still get approved, they're just treated as not having relevant knowledge. Which is where your presentation is so helpful because you talk about, actually, this is the, this is relevant knowledge. You know, it's not just these narrow studies that are done on when a cell dies. You know what I mean? You know, in, in, in a Petri dish. Right, um, and so, so, yeah, so it's the Mahtoronga, it's telling what is relevant knowledge to help decide these kinds of matters. So I would think that is, that is a really key point to take out of it. And it's not just who makes it, but it's how these decisions are made. And yeah, so you hit the nail on the head on some of those things. But um, so I was gonna, I said it was a comment and then seeing what your reaction, if I could look at the recommendations in that light, for me that helps. And I don't know what, whether you have a reaction, but you're nodding furiously, so I'm guessing that that's a good.
I think, I think this is, this is that discussion that we're having. I think we know what doesn't work and what should ever happen again. And I think that we really need to have some underpinning moral values. That, you know, that are commonly shared by all cultures, which Mahtoronga Maori, when you look at its essence or Tikanga Maori, look at its essence, it's about Aroha. Mana Kitanua, that Fakafanauinga Tanga, all those essential complex is what should underpin every governmental, every government department. So we look, ah, yes, absolutely, Kath, we're looking at it constitutionally.
Yeah, and, and just.
Thank you so much.
No, and I might make a link with the current RMA reforms where they are defining science input knowledge, including Mahtoronga. Alright, um, which is actually a huge change. Um, and that's, you know, there's a, there's a section, a, a recommended clause in the exposure draft for the RMA reform to give effect to the principles of the treaty. I still don't think it's, it's not detailed enough, doesn't tell what give effect to means.
Absolutely, and I think you guys will have some case studies of where the EPA have absolutely failed. With Ngati Rehea and Ngati Reha who are Ngati Waiki Aulti, where they were approving hazardous consents that should never have been approved. They, they, they approved the seabed mining, which Ngati Doonui fighting in the High Court. Why should Iwi have to go to the High Court to protect themselves? Just because the EPA wants to push through in a consent to support change Pacific Limited? Why do Iwi have to go to the High Court, spend thousands of dollars against the fighting the EPA just to protect their okay? So yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Kiora.
I'll call it to him there, thank you for your, for your testimony, it was um, you, you echoed the concerns of our people Maerano. And um, and I like the fact that you started with some Fakapapa and some Mahteranga. And because really that, that, that Fakapapa has developed over centuries. Actually, more than centuries before the beginning of time. And so, um, and within that Fakapapa is the, the correct, um, I, I say correct in a way that it's more, it works. But the correct way of, and the quick process of relationships with the environment. So you brought that up beautifully with um, with Marai Kura and Faturangi. You know, that, that relationship and that, that balance is always there. And so I just wanted to make it to you, I did to him there for that. And I am part of Te Heringa, um, but um, only because it's better to be inside the tent than outside the tent. You know, to be, be able to, to hopefully uh, challenge some of the, the, in the best way we can. And um, what got me, what, what was interesting, incredibly interesting to me yesterday was the um, the capture of regulation, the national capture regulation that was brought up. And um, that, that captures also trying to um, take our Mahteranga. And take our, our um, our knowing of our Fenua and of our lands and of our Tonga species. So um, I, I just want to make it to you to, for you to begin our day with that core. It was so tena quid to him there.
Tenaka to Katoa.
Well, just one, just one more quick, quick, I think you can do this quickly. It's about a, a question about the Universal Declaration on Rights of Indigenous Peoples. Because, and one of the, lots of beautiful things about that document, but a couple are that it focuses on, also on communities, not just individuals. And it focuses on lands rather than, rather than imagining human beings as kind of separate from their land. Uh, so just a question of, do you picture that, that um, declaration as consistent with what you're recommending here?
Yes, tena quid Tom, yes, I think we, I think we need to really need to look at the constitutional makeup of this country right across the board. Um, and I think we need to look at the unit group at the UN level. And then we need to look at the treaty of Waichangi at the government level. So constitutionally, uh, being underpinned by Tikanga Maori, for the sake of all New Zealanders and for the sake of all our country. If we want to truly heal what's been damaged and ruined, we need to restore it.
Thank you.
Kiora, Isla, thank you.
So much, Hira, that was really valuable, thank you. So before we move on to um, the testimony of Sally Steadman, we're just going to take a short break. And so just ten minutes, uh, ten minutes break to make some notes and gather our thoughts. And we'll be back in a moment. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Um, after that quick breather. And we are continuing with day two of our people's inquiry. Um, and our next speaker is Sally Steadman from the Coromandel. Uh, talking about the importance of valid consultation about chemicals. Um, after Sally, just to let you know, uh, we're gonna have a five minute break before we speak to representatives of the Sawmill Workers Against Poisons Group, Swap, uh, from Fakatani. And then after that, we'll have a lunch break for an hour. Um, so first of all, we'd like to welcome Sally Steadman, are you there, Sally?
I'm Kiora.
Ah, Kiora, hi. Uh, so Sally, you've got some slides that you want to show. Do you want me to show those for you or are you happy to share?
Yeah.
That's fantastic, so if you want to, to begin um, introducing yourself and then giving your testimony. And then I'll give you a little wave three minutes before your time is coming to an end.
Ara, Kiora, I'm Tera Pata Katoa, Ngamihinui Kia Kaita Katoa, Iteina Yata. Ki Raro i Ti Tuani o Taku Fari, Ni Tua Tatoa wa Roro Hiko, Tena Tatoa Katoa. Ako Toka Te Te Maunga, Ko Haratanga Te Awa, Ko Haratanga Te Marai. Ko Raka Rua Te Fare Nui, Ko Ngarupi, Te Fare Kai, Ko Ngati Proki, Haratanga Aho. I'll just go back, I've gone a bit fast. So, uh, tena pata katoa, I, uh, thank you very much for allowing me to give my um, testimony on what I consider to be a um, very, a topic of our times. It's in particular for Maori and in particular as we're heading into um, a new era of um, increased poisoning. On a massive, excuse me, um, on a massive scale that we've never seen before. And it's happening um, everywhere. So in terms of Altiarua, yes, of course, it's happening all over Altiarua. It's happening on our roadsides, in our gardens, um, our driveways, our orchards. So it's massive poisoning that's going on. Uh, if I bring funnel that down to a regional level, in my case, the Waikato. Uh, what we see happening in the Waikato with the Waikato Regional Council, the Department of Conservation is a massive and renewed effort to um, obfuscate any opposition and all opposition to any poisoning that's going on. Uh, we're blinded by science and I have to take, pay a huge um, money to um, Hira Hunapu, the previous speaker and her, her quarter around Maori as being kaitsiaki, and yet we're totally ignored. Um, whenever we are included in terms of Tititi or Waichangi, it's always give effect to with no follow through. Uh, when we, when they speak about the Declaration of Independence, it's a bunch of Maoris dancing around a flagpole. Um, and so we are not taken seriously. So in Waikato, at the Waikato Regional Council level, this is where I think our problem has begun. And um, yeah, so I'm taking a personal stand, although I've got a lot of groups behind me for the purpose of the people's inquiry. I have, um, I'm speaking on my behalf, my own behalf, and that of my Fano and my trust. So in July twenty twenty, a, oh, so, so that's the regional. So then we come down to the Coromandel. Now, Coromandel has historically been anti everything, which is a good thing, in my view. Anti-mining, anti, um, anti-poisons, you know, you name it. We have um, protested against the continued bashing of the people and this, and this area, Coromandel. So if we bring that down, Coromandel, we have the northern part of the Coromandel Peninsula. And then we come down to where I'm from, which is uh, Haratonga Kennedy Bay. And that's eleven and a half thousand hectares of um, mainly multiply owned Maori land. Eighty-five percent of the Fenua here is eighty-five percent Maori owned. So if we bring it down further to our community of Haratona, and then we look at uh, one, uh, one group, uh, two people. It's two people responsible who live here, who were born here, who are Maori. Who have been personally responsible for poisoning the entire Coromandel Peninsula over the last twenty-one years. Either as dock employees or as WRC contractors. And in the last five years, as business owners of their own poison empire. Now, I know that our story is no different to what's going on in many other communities, Ottemotu. So, but mine is, it's personal to me because I live here and I want it stopped. I'll just go to the next slide, which I can't really see because all your face are there, you know, move that around. So, let's have a look about Haratona. So we were gifted this Fenua, we are, we are a diaspora of Ngatiparoki Thirapiti, which is Gisborne, the east coast Ngatiparoo people. Uh, in eighteen fifty-two, Fenua was gifted to, or Tukum Fenua, as we call it, to three Ngatiparoo hapu uh, by the then Paramount Treaty, Pa'ulitutu. Uh, the hapu, the three hapu were Te Aitanga Amate, which is my hapu, Te Awera and Te Fano A Raka Rua. So uh, eleven and a half thousand hectares are eighty-five percent Maori owned. Land blocks range in size from zero point four five hectares or a football field maybe, to twelve hundred hectares. And they range in, in ownership as defined by law. We can see general land, which is no Maori title, and approximately fifteen percent of our land is, is, is general land. Then we have sole owned Maori land, uh, which is approximately ten percent of the land ownership here. Then we have multiply owned, so if you fifteen, twenty-five percent, so fifty to, sorry, seventy-five percent, if my math is correct, someone might like to correct me. Um, you know, eighty-five percent of the eighty-five percent is multiply owned, right? Multiplied owned Maori land blocks, ranging in ownership from uh, two people to, I think the largest is here in, in this valley is around seven hundred owners in one block, right? And then we have government administered land blocks that are supposedly returning to Iwi under the treaty or under Tititi. And these are dock managed blocks, large blocks of land. That are dock managed, so they just poison those willy nilly whenever they want to. And without consulting anyone because they're the managers, they are the kaitsiaki. So really, when we can look at the diaspora approach here. The three hapu came up here right from the time of the gifting eighteen fifties, right up through to the end of World War Two. Settled and allocated onto Maori land blocks. The establishment of the Maori Land Court, which was the result of the Maori land wars and the subsequent takeover of all our lands across the whole country. What will remain to Maori were then parcelled up into land blocks, carved up. The size depended on how valid your claims were as to how much Fenua you got. And were awarded to Ranga Tera Fano first, of which mine was one, then through the ranks of seniority. And this, this was determined by Maori Fakapapa, as well as Pakaha, were involved in that awarding. So if you were Ranga Tera Fano and you were friends with a local councillor, somebody who sat on the council or something like that. And you formed a good relationship with them, you can bet your bottom dollar, you got a lot of land awarded under this new system of the Maori Land Court. Many Maori have missed out that entire boat. However, that's, that's not where I'm going. Uh, some Fano got a few shares, others were awarded large tracts of land. Um, I think our Fano can claim, uh, you know, in total around six and a half thousand hectares. Not sole ownership, but in a, in a model as shown before, a mixture of land title. So our governing bodies here, like many other um, Maori communities, Ottemotu. Uh, the force enforced um, by Pakel law to uh, so that treaties could be settled and, and settled. Treaty Waichangi settlements could be made, um, they, government would only listen to large natural groupings. So therefore, things like Iwi Maori authorities, large incorporations of large land blocks, large trusts. Um, these were all formed, Ruunanga were formed out of nothing, out of nowhere. And then, of course, you have the traditional um, Fano hapu model of the Marai, so the Marai trustees. Um. So John Tamihere has been our treaty negotiator for the last fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two years, he's done nothing. Uh, he comes to Haratona twice a year, blows smoke up everyone's chimneys and then leaves. and then leaves again, and we still have not settled when we have got one of the smallest settlements, settlements, you know, on the table at the Waitangi Tribunal. So he's done nothing for us in terms of representing our people here in Haratona, as far as I'm concerned. The rūnanga, of which he is our treaty negotiator, they had the mandate to progress our treaty settlement, but that's turned into them becoming the maangai, or the spokespeople, for the whole of Haratona. Now, this is in law, this is, this is why Waikato, the regional councils engage with them and think that they are speaking to the right people, while they're not. As far as I'm concerned, Maori landowners and shareholders in these large blocks are not consulted at all, ever, because it's too difficult. It can't be done, well, it can be done, but they're too lazy to do it. They'd rather do it the quick and dirty way. So we have two people here who, after 21 years of poisoning the whole peninsula, have finally decided and set their sights on Haratona, their homeland, where they are from, as being the last area to poison. And they have made a concerted effort to do so in collusion with Waikato Regional Council and Department of Conservation, the regional offices of both. So that's Hamilton for WRC and Fitianga for DOC. And that's where, this is where our problem starts, you know, that these councils do not know who they are consulting with, and they don't do any due diligence about finding out whether they're consulting with the right people. So the two dudes who have been responsible for all of this, they collectively own, out of that eleven and a half thousand hectares, thirty hectares. But they get to poison the whole eleven and a half thousand? No, I don't think so. That's not going to happen. So if we just move on, because I realised we haven't got much time. So who are these people? Well, Tiara Ho dot Kennedy, Kennedy Bay Limited are a privately owned and operated business. And this appears to be the way that the regional councils and DOC prefer to work with businesses, companies, contractors. They don't want to work with iwi Maori, they don't want to work with communities. It's too hard, it's too difficult, and nobody wants them. So they pick and choose who they are going to work with, and it happens to be, in our case, Tiara Ho dot Kennedy Bay Limited. Now, they were established as a company with the New Zealand Company's office in May 2020. They were awarded $400,000 of Natural Heritage funding by the Waikato Regional Council of $400,000 in July. So they have no financial history, no records that that can be substantiated, but they are gifted on a plate $400,000. And Waikato Regional Council point-blank refused to accept that they are funding poisoners. They refuse to accept it. Anyway, so the business is part of Tiara Ka social services. Now, they're a social service organisation, a charitable trust, who have set up this business under their charitable trust. By the same, the same, the chairperson of that trust is the same person who is the only director of the company. So that these two guys' names are not actually on the register. Now, they, I know that they got their funding largely based on kopapa Maori underpinning their application. Because we were told by Katadina Hodg and Tipa Ma'uta, out of who we had in Kennedy Bay here, that their application was the first Maori application that had come before them, and they felt they had to support it, no matter what. So they didn't do any due diligence. All of these applicants, you know, there's no opposition. You're not allowed into their publicly excluded meetings. Nobody knows when they're given the money until it's announced in the paper, and it's already a done deal. Yeah, so the Matauranga Maori unit, I'm afraid to say, is definitely the reason why this group got funded. So they, their Matauranga Maori unit is run by a person who is matatou i te reo, mea unā tikāmā Maori, so knows everything was brought up, deeped in it, by her parents. So she is developing their Matauranga Maori unit. At the end of the day, she doesn't care about the poison, she thinks they're a good thing, so she's siding with them. Okay, so as I wrap up now, they don't have the mandate to speak on our behalf. So we have, just in the last week, we have sought legal advice on the matter of Tiara Ho dot Kennedy Bay falsifying their application, and that we want a full review of it. And actually, they have reviewed it for the last five months. We were called into two private, non-recorded meetings with the WRC, told to our faces that they're, that we were right, and that the funding was going to be pulled. While just two weeks ago, just two weeks ago, there has been a 360-degree turn on that decision. And their decision is, no, we're sticking by our original, our original decision. So, noraira inga roo rangatira ma'o tēnai ko'papa o tēnai wa'a, tēnā tātou ka tōa. Thank you very much for listening. Oh, that's me, I'm finished.
Thank you, Sally. That was very interesting. And I'm, I'm actually going to pick up on some of the points that you've made there in my own presentation this afternoon. So I'll look forward to future discussions about what we share. So can I hand over to the commissioners who would like to ask questions?
Yes, Sally, thank you so much, your presentation, it was, it's deeply disturbing. And it raises a problem that I've come across on numerous occasions, where consultation with Maori is token, where the Maori who will give the right answer are the ones that are consulted with. And I'd like to hear from you how we change this. How do we change this so the right people get consulted, whether we get the right outcomes?
Well, funny, funny you should say that. There's a new paper coming out of the Office of Crown and Maori Relations. That's currently Minister Kelvin Davis is the head of. And there's a document being formulated, and it's now out in the public arena, called Tiara Fiti, The Bridge. And it's a co-governance model, and it's something that all government-funded agencies must interpret and follow. And it's not a checkbox exercise, it's not saying sweet words like "give effect to the Treaty of Waitangi". Okay, you're saying that, how are you doing it? Where? Show us the evidence. Where is your commitment? Where is your consultation? Who have you consulted with? So the framework of Tiara Fiti is a very good framework for our time for now. So I believe that, but it's too late. In our case, we are seeking legal advice, but really, structures like where Hira Hunapu said in her, in her submission, that EPA needs deconstructing, or, you know, and so do regional councils are really the last bastion of ball-headed, I'm really sorry to say it, white man power in terms of local government. They hold the power. But they need to be totally overhauled and reconstructed into something, you know, according to what Hira was talking about, about rohi having a say in what's happening in their region in terms of pest control, pest management, and poisoning our fenua, we do not want it. Kia ora, thank you very much.
Kia ora, Sally. So yeah, I similarly, thank you, that is, I agree with Mary, you're very disturbing. I mean, it's not just the method of decision-making, but this idea, especially when you have like treaty claims or and slash or Maori-owned land, and they can decide that they have responsibility as a regional council, and we're just going to do, you know.
We're just going to work with who we want, and yeah, these two people will do, they're representative.
Yeah, but, but that, that, I mean, it's this idea of responsibility for land, right? And what, where they think the responsibilities lie. And they have more, as a regional council, they're just more worried about their statutory duties and things like, what they think, their interpretation of them, than dealing with this on the ground. So I do think that is very concerning. And yeah, I have no idea, even though I'm the legalist, I have no idea what your legal challenge grounds are. Because sometimes they've signed contracts with these people already, and that's very hard.
It's a done deal, they've signed the contract.
Yeah.
Our legal advice has said that the Natural Heritage funding is a discretionary fund. So really, Waikato Regional Council can give it to who they want, whenever they want, without any review of the process.
Hmm, but, but, so it's not just that, it's also like pest control. This idea that this is what they thought they had to do on someone else's land.
Yeah, yeah.
That's mind-boggling. So I don't know what, just the way you presented it, it just sounds like there's something wrong going on. So I don't know what someone at their end is thinking as the justification, but so yeah, I'm very interested in solutions, and not just on, on like co-governance models, but on responsibilities for land generally, like who has responsibility for making decisions on pest control at a wider level. We heard yesterday about rules from DOC, for example, and policies and preferences that are internal that shut out different options, such as that Pest Mate 100. Okay, so Ushul's got her hand up.
I'm just conscious of the time and that we've got
Oh my goodness, yeah.
A group lined up very soon, so is there any further final questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, tēnā koe faia Sally. Tēnā koe. I, I think for me, your testimony brought up was the importance of of all New Zealanders understanding the history of how we came to be the way we are. You know, how the, you know, how the Maori Land Court was formed from the Maori land wars and how the legislation and the government was formed. And, you know, it's, I don't believe that's taught very well that way. Actually, I don't believe it's taught at all in any of our primary schools. And I think that for me, you know, aroha kia kaita for what's been going on within because that's actually been happening right throughout, all iwi. So it's not just, and so, thank you for bringing that up again to Sally. So that's part of faia Sally, so that's all I really had to say, to thank you again for your testimony. And, oh, na mihimahana ka faia Sally.
Aitina koe, na mihiki a koe, hoki, aia, kia ora. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
Kete.
Very much appreciate your time. So now, feel free to get up and take a break. I appreciate all the attendees that are silent observers, and we acknowledge your presence and we appreciate your, your time. And so we're just going to shuffle some technology around to enable our next speakers, which are representatives of, who are representatives of SWAP, which is the Sawmill Workers Against Poisons Group, who some of, some of you may have seen before, and representing themselves on, on the radio yesterday as well, we saw a clip. So the representatives we've got speaking today are Erin Matariki, Karima and Carla Akuhata, Marama Cook and Gordon Stewart. So I'm not sure who's going to speak first, but we, we welcome you all, and we're very interested to hear your story of you and your whanau from your group. So welcome. Tēnā koto. Who would like to speak first? Erin, I can see your, your microphone is off.
Kia ora, yes, I, I'll speak first, I just want to make sure we're all here.
We've got a few minutes.
Yeah, about ten minutes early.
Take, take the time to, to get ready. And we'll just, we'll just take a quick breather while, while we shuffle around and make sure everybody's got the access to the technology.
Just while we're waiting, can I ask if our gracious SWAP presenters managed to listen to our other submissions this morning?
Not this morning, but I did yesterday, Catherine. Yeah, very interesting.
Yeah, so they, they will go up on video if you did happen to miss them. But we did have some powerful ones, including from Hira on Tiamaori. And then Sally before, just recently on pretty much colonisation and quote, consultation, unquote, with councils. So yeah, ones that are all relevant.
Himma, would you like to switch on? We know you would like to give an acknowledgement as well.
Aitina kaita. Aramai, haramai kakata mai raki tēnai huenga. And I just wanted to thank you for, thank you all for coming to give your testimony to us today because like a lot of whanau down there, my, my brother, my, my sister's two brother-in-laws worked at the sawmills and they were, and it gave me an opportunity to here na kamau mahara barata, and, and his name was, they were the kumero, so Jack Kumero and Fine Kumero. And so thank you for being your coriro and your aroha and your mamai to us. And noraira, please, please, give me the floor, haramai.
Kia ora faia Himma, kia ora. Oh, well, katima ta tātou, aitena tātou. Tua tahi katuku fakaro ki a papa tuanuku ki a rangi nui ki te tāi ao e fakaora nei a tātou. Kahuri au ki o tātou mate, ki a rātou huki e hinga nei roto i tēnai wa'a mate uruta. Katuku aroha hoki ki a rātou te hunga i fakapua ki tēnai ko'papa, arāko Anko Joe Harawera, me na maangai o te Ropu Sawmill Workers Against Poisons. Rātou i manawanui, i manawaroa, i fakapau kaha ki te fafaimo o tātou whanau hapu fenua. Kahuri taku arō ki a tātou na whanau koa mahwemai. Ko tātou e kau nei te ko'papa iē nei rā. Katuku mihiu ki ki a kootona kaifakarite. Ki a kootou te mahinui ki te fakakao ya mātou coriro. Mona mamai ki o mātou whanau me na tū kino ki a papa tuanuku. Ko te tūmanako kaputa he huapai Mona ure fakahiki, tēnā kootou. So kia ora mai tātou, my name is Erin Matariki Ka, and I'm here with our Ropu SWAP to present our submission to you and answer any questions that you have from our submission. SWAP is a group that is committed to the ongoing health of the people and the health of the environment, particularly regarding issues from the exposures to chemicals, from the sawmills and the paper mills. SWAP's vision is the bringing together of Matauranga Maori and Western science, medicine, and the gathering of people for the health and the wellbeing of papa tuanuku and alitanga te fenua. So I am here with our co-chair, Anko Kiriamma Akuhata, who himself was a sawmill worker. Other co-chair, Maruma Harawira Cook, who is the daughter of our Uncle Joe Harawira, who we remember today. We have SWAP's secretary, Carla Akuhata. And soon, hopefully, we'll have a stalwart supporter of SWAP since our early days, Gordon Stewart. So my role is to just introduce our coriro today in the constitutional context. So starting quite broadly before we, we hear from our whanau about the impacts on the, on our people and, and the intergenerational impact of this, this poisoning. So we'll take our submission as read, and thank you for receiving our submission. Oh, kia ora Gordon, see you there now. So I just wanted to highlight five core points before passing on to Anko Kirri. So the first point is Um so the first point is about colonial capitalism. So the stories that we share today are about a whole community of people, mostly Natiawa people, intergenerationally, and our way of life that has been abused and poisoned for profit. And we recognise that there are countless others who remain voiceless around Aotearoa who have suffered the same in silence. Um the reason that we are all here at this hearing is because of the colonial capitalist attitude of domination over the earth. It has become normal to relate to the earth as a resource or a property or a commodity that we as humans have granted ourselves property rights over to extract from and to dispose into and to modify and so on. And this arrogance of human rights over the earth as a commodity is the root cause of our illnesses. PCP, dioxins and other toxins and pesticides are obvious examples of this attitude as they degrade the earth. They poison the people intergenerationally for the sole purpose of profit under the guise of of progress. Our second point is about tangata finua and tino rangatira tanga. So us as tangata finua, we relate to the earth in an entirely different way. We are tangata finua, people of the earth. We belong to the earth. We are her children. This is true biologically, historically, as well as spiritually in our cosmology. As Jessica Hutchings puts it, we are soil. We come from soil. We live on soil. We will return to the soil. This signifies its central importance to us and demonstrates our deep relationships with and belonging to Papa Tuanuku. Instead of rights of ownership, extraction and disposal, we have obligations of care and protection of kaityaki tanga, to love the earth and look after her for our future generations. Constitutionally, our rights to relate to the earth in this way are protected by our right of tino rangatira tanga, guarded by Tietiriti O Waitangi, Te Fakaputanga O Te Ranga Tira Tanga, the Declaration of Independence eighteen thirty-five, and internationally by the UN Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, or ANDRIP. So the poisoning of our people and our finua by the indiscriminate and careless use of PCP, dioxins, furants and other hazardous substances used in the timber industry of New Zealand is a breach of these protections of our people and of our kawa and tikanga here in these lands of Aotearoa. And I note that many of those sawmills were owned by the government. Uh the third point is the contamination of our lands. So just sharing a bit more about the finua. PCP and dioxins from the sawmill processing has poisoned the land, the health of the finua, the water and our beyond human kin, especially our tuna, frogs, our birds, our shellfish and all life. There are thirty-six identified contamination sites within the Fakatani district alone that are linked to the Fakatani mill alone. Uh these were identified by our own truck drivers, whose role it was to take the toxic waste from the mill and leave it somewhere. The majority of these sites are on and around Marai and on Maori land. Further, our coach here, Uncle Kiri, points out that there are still ten years worth of dumping that occurred in the nineteen fifty's, which are unaccounted for because the drivers at those times were not allowed alive when we assess those sites to point them out. So there may be ten further sites that we are unaware of. And nationwide, the problem is far greater. It is estimated that of New Zealand's approximate nine hundred sawmills, at least seventy percent of them use PCP. Um that estimate is two hundred tonnes of PCP was used around New Zealand per annum for a period of approximately forty years. That equates to some five thousand tonnes of PCP in total. The location of the toxic waste produced from those five thousand tonnes over about six hundred sites nationwide is largely unknown because it was never monitored and still there is no inventory showing us where these sites are, nor what they have been converted into. And it is a major hazard. Um as was explained in our submission, PCP dioxins are known to persist and bioaccumulate in sediment and living tissue and can thereby pass up the food chain and remain persistent in the sediment and soils. The fourth point is the disconnection of our lands. So that the contamination has caused. The contamination of our finua has caused disconnection of tangata finua from finua. It is now dangerous for us to connect with our finua. Tohu of these contamination include where previously healthy trees or plants die. Fruit trees that feed us produce flowers and seeds, but the fruit withers and dies quickly. Waterways have low species diversity and do not support traditional kai. The natural flow of water is impeded and water quality is poor where we would be gathering kai or swimming or being with our whanau in the summer. Species have changed or been relocated or species are no longer existent. This disconnection is felt keenly by our Natiawa people physically, culturally and spiritually, being forced away from Papa Tuanuku, being unable to turn the soil or to visit parts of her domain, interact with the living system of our mother, including the intergenerational passing of knowledge, stories, culture, language, that all flows with connection to our lands. So our disconnection is a huge um a huge mamai for us to this day and will continue to be until we can heal these lands. So our fifth point is on healing, returning to kawa and tikanga. So Swap has done a lot of work with healing the finua and I should note that a lot of money has been spent on the finua where not so much has actually been caring for the tangata. Um Swap was the instigator of an important trial called the Tiurumor Papa Tuanuku Trials, uh which was uh based on the premise of Mahtoranga that we are of Papa Tuanuku and that Papa Tuanuku can heal herself, that we can assist in the healing of Papa Tuanuku. Um this trial showed that myco remediation and phyto remediation could be employed, which is obviously the use of fungi and of poplar trees, other plants can be used and employed to break down the dioxins within the soil. Um this is a system based on fakapapa to the land that everything together can come together to to treat this foreign man-made substance. Um and our trials, which were ten years ago now, showed results of eighty-five percent uh reduction in the contamination of the site and they will continue. These are intergenerational trials. They need at least fifteen years to show the uh greater results. There has been a bigger trial undertaken by the regional council, sorry, an implementation of this trial, but we do not have the results for that yet. That was much larger. So just to wrap up this part of our submission presentation, um we have been disconnected and without our fakapapa connections, we we our purpose together has been challenged, limited. Justice can only be truly achieved when we remember our place in this web of life and return to our sense of duty of care and respect for the land, the waters and for our kin. This is our challenge to ourselves and to our nation and we encourage the people's inquiry to consider this wider constitutional context and making recommendations for transformation. Constitutionally, historically and biologically, we require courageous transformation in our decision-making processes towards honouring tino rangatira tanga and the right right to make decisions for the benefit of Papa Tuanuku in accordance with their Maori, our Mahtoranga and our tikanga. There is a growing awakening and demand globally to the return for indigenous knowledge systems to care for Papa Tuanuku. And we encourage, we encourage anything that points in that direction. So without much more to say on that point, I'd like to pass to Uncle Kiri to talk to us more about the harm and the impact and the stories of our our tangata. So kaua mai tātou.
Uh kaua tātou. I am called Kiriam Akuhata, talk wing. Uh I'm the coach here as Erin explained of the Sawmill Workers Against Poison. Uh and also in the I am the coordinator for the Baya Pedi Facilitation Service, where former Sawmill workers exposed to PCP and other hazardous substances. I want to start where Meramai Williams mentioned in her interview, included in our submission about living adjacent to the Kōpia Pō Kanal. My family moved into this house, which was located right next to the canal in nineteen sixty-two. After Meramai's family had lived there, it was in was in this canal, I learned to swim, catch eels, fish. We would wander around the environment and visit the Sawmill to collect forty gallon drums and build rafts to sail down the down the waterway, not unlike the huckleberry huckleberry fin stories. It wasn't wasn't until later that I realised the impact of these activities. As ironically, I have been part of the trial to remediate the toxic waterway after it was recognised as being incredibly polluted by dioxins. In nineteen sixty-seven, we moved to a new house in Warraka on Wurriwa Drive, which was adjacent to the Fakatani River and where the tide would cross the mudflats and come up to the roadside. It was not long later that the decision makers of the day decided to reclaim the mudflats by using wood waste, including can included contaminated materials. The local children, including myself and my siblings, would play in this area as this work was going on. Would build huts, generally generally do as kids do, playing, fishing, collecting kai for our whanau, interacting with the environs. Ironically, again, this site is here to be have the second highest contaminated contamination levels in Fakatani after the mill site itself. It's not surprising that there are so many who lived along Wurriwa Drive and in general Warraka and have become ill over the years. And we're still some of those who I played with in their childhood years, those childhood years have since died um at a very early age. I started working at the Sawmill in nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-eight, eventually moved to the pulp and paper site as most Sawmill workers did to piece their income as shipworkers. Normally you would start at the raw material gang who unloaded the fifty plus kilos by hand. At about this time, I became a member of the fire brigade, which allowed myself, my partner and our oldest daughter to move on into one of the mill houses at One Marshalls Road, which was right next to the door to the mill and closest to the Sawmill and Bock factory. Two of my children were born and raised at this house. At the time, there were fifteen other homes in the village where other Sawmill workers and their families would live. We had fruit trees, gardens in our yard. Every winter, properties would flood. When it rained because of the ongoing rope repairs at the mill, caused these properties to be situated lower than the mill. There was a small creek at the front of the property, which came from the diffusion shed. We bore on copper chrome arsenic. We used it as part of the treatment process. When it would rain, we would we would have to park our cars on the road and wade through knee-deep water uh to get to the house carrying our children. During this time, it was the way of harm that was occurring to myself or my family. But since then, I've come to realise that we now suffer from the symptoms of ill health as a result of work in the environments that we live in. Therefore, I want to go directly to the to acute symptoms. Among these are mood swings, profuse sweating, coropti. These are currently recognised by ACC minimised. I want to say that mood swings are much more than than this description articulates. Mood swings can lead to depression, which is leads to anxiety. And while in the past, these symptoms have been recognised as being serious, they've had a detrimental effect on families of the Sawmill workers. The symptoms lead to irrational thoughts, which in turn leads to irrational actions. This has often caused breakdown in relationships between the men and their partners, as well as the men and their children. The trauma does not go away. It has long-term bearing on on relationships. This is the emotional impact of having to deal with multiple miscarriages. And this is also takes its toll on the men and their families. But I will let my fellow presenters presenters explain this further. Well, now I want to move on to the chronic illnesses, which include diabetes, heart failures, cancers, minimal and eventual death. Twenty years ago, Swap did a survey where we visited all of our urupa, our cemeteries, and found that the average age of death for Sawmill worker was sixty-five. Most of these men hadn't reached the age where they could receive their superannuation or or pension. They had worked worked all their lives, contributed to society, paid taxes and ACC levies, but never really were able to enjoy the benefits of their hard work. They were left to die with whanau having to care for these men. This is more trauma for the whanau to have to bear with no understanding of why. So to be accused that it is our lifestyles as Maoris that have caused this, as ACC have done by refusing to acknowledge that working with these poisons has contributed to our ill health, whilst to be denied the quality of life is more than an insult. And why should our future generations have to further be traumatized by this after they had been seen the breadwinner, no longer able to work following the closure of the mill? We were once fit, healthy, strong men who played sport regularly and lived an active life. But we have wasted away with debilitating chronic pain and seen as grumpy old men who have have had to resort to the dull just to live with. Many of us still renting barely are able to cover our health needs. The tone that we have to take on does not represent a positive role model for our future generations. To amplify the message, I want to tell you about my personal story. In two thousand and I was diagnosed with a bone disease, diffuse idiopathic skeletal hyperstosis, spinal ossification with symptoms of chronic pain, flexibility issues. I have suffered from depression, anxiety, irrational thoughts and irrational actions and also had ongoing profuse sweating, while this could sound minor to some, it has taken a toll on my mental health on the relationship with my wife. But I had the opportunity to, sorry, had the opportunity to attend Queen Elizabeth Hospital in Rotorua to learn about my condition and how to react to the symptoms, which was most certainly taking its toll on me and my mama mana as a man. At the time, I recognised, I reconnected with Joe Harawira, Harawira, time worker who helped start my journey about learning about pentaclofenol as well as other dark other dioxins and furants. On the long along the way, I've met scientists, epidemiologists, microbiologists, phytobiologists, other experts who have all added to my knowledge. Experts like Gordon Jackson have helped me understand dioxin structures and more importantly, how these interact with local with living organisms, as well as pathways on how they enter the system by accumulating the fatty tissue and the endocrine system and therefore the immune system, where they will turn things on and off. This has helped me understand my own issues and those faced by my fellow Sawmill workers and their families. But it doesn't help us to fix it, nor does it give us relief. In two thousand and ten, I joined Joe Harawira. The government initiated special support service for Sawmill workers and their whanau who were exposed to PCP and other hazardous substances. Under Joe, I assumed the health portfolio while he looked after the contaminated sites. We always worked together and because of our kopa was always has been about restoring the health of the man and the land. As Joe would often say, the health of the man and the health of the land has to come together. Sadly, Lainey has had fair amount of money and time thrown at it. While there is still more work to do, this areas has been somewhat supported, unlike the health of the men and their families, physically, mentally and spiritually. The health of the man has been languished with former Sawmill workers only eligible for one free health check per year. The health check is to look at modifiable risk factors such as if they smoke require access to smoking cessation programmes or if they are overweight, you need to get a green prescription. Sadly, whanau health has been addressed or even acknowledged, has not been addressed, even acknowledged. To conclude, I want to say this issue is not only a sawmill worker issue for our fix, our whanau and future generations. Thirty-six named contaminated sites across Fakatani. This is also an issue for our community, particularly our Maori whanau. Many who fakapapa to the land that has been poisoned by PCP and other hazardous materials from the Fakatani Mill. It led to that the Fakatani Mill was only mill within New Zealand, was not the only mill within New Zealand, was using these contaminants. And there were, at least as said before, nine hundred mills across the country. At that time, the PCP was probably used. It should be an issue for national significance. There are thirty-three mill, don't contaminated sites in Fakatani. And possibly we had to rely on former drivers who dropped off contaminated waste to identify these places. And what about the other sawmills? We had eighty-six employees at the Fakatani Mill, but there was a workforce of seven hundred at Tasman, pulp and paper, and fourteen hundred at Waipara. So how many contaminated sites would have been created as a result of these mills? How do we ever find out? It begs the question that we, are we really clean, green in here in Oteal? If we do not acknowledge and accept the responsibility of this issue now, then our future generations will bear the brunt of paralysis by malice and have the same health outcomes or even worse. Thank you very much.
Kia ora tatoa. My name is Karaka Akuhata and I'm taking over the presentation from now. I'm the eldest daughter of Kiriama Akuhata, who you've just heard from, and I'm here to support as evidence of my own testimony. One of my earliest memories is being carried in from my dad because our yard had filled up with water. At the time, we were living at One Marshalls Road, which was right next to the mill, and I was about four. I remember when it would rain, the entire yard would flood so that my parents would have to park on the road at the front of the property and wade through the water to get to the house. I remember the orange tinge in the water that spilled out from the creek at the front of the property. And it was only when I was reading my dad's evidence for this presentation that I realised that this waterway came from the diffusion shed on the mill. I remember my childhood as being a happy one. My cousins would come to stay with us and we would eat the fruit from the trees that were in our yard, including feijoa, plums and even peaches. We would join the other kids living along Marshalls Road and play freely, exploring the mill site and the surrounding paddocks as only curious children can. On weekends, we would head into my grandparents, as both sets lived on Muriwai Drive in Waikato. Our cousins would often meet our grandparents and we would take off across the mudflats that had long since been filled and towards the Fakatani River to swim, fish, gather oysters, play wort or just hang out as children do. It was idyllic, or so it seemed to me. It wasn't until later, after my dad had hooked up with Joe Harawera again, that I began to get an inkling that my childhood might not have been so innocent. And since then, I have learned that many of the issues that me and my whanau have had to face have been as a result of the environment in which we grew up in and the job my dad had for the first few years of my life. I was about eleven when I got my first period, a pretty average age for a young girl to get her first period. But ever since then, there's nothing been normal about my cycles. I've never been regular and sometimes I can go months without even getting my period. In fact, today it has been eight months since I had my last period. I was diagnosed with PCOS in my twenties and this was no great surprise because my parents had always been honest with me that when the time came, I might not be able to conceive or carry a child's term. They had known plenty of women who had been wise to our dads, workmates, including those who shared fakapapa connections to our whanau that had trouble conceiving or who had several miscarriages. In two thousand and five, at the age of twenty-five, I finally got pregnant for the first time. But unfortunately, I miscarried before the three-month mark. Thankfully, not long later, I became pregnant again and this time I was able to carry to full term with my son being born in two thousand and six. He is now fifteen years old, but I've never been able to carry another child. And at forty-one, my days of bearing children have probably come to a close. While I'm grateful to have one child, two of my siblings can't say the same. My baby sister, who is currently thirty-one, has also been diagnosed with PCOS. She has been trying to have a child for some years and while we all remain hopeful that she will be able to experience the joy of motherhood, we also know we must remain pragmatic. My brother, who is now thirty-six, was diagnosed with distendies testes when he was a young boy. He hasn't been able to father children of his own and we know there's an increased risk of him contracting testicular cancer as a result of this issue. Among our whanau whanau, we have two nieces who were born with conditions that have impacted on their health. One was diagnosed before birth with dandy walker syndrome, which essentially means that she was born with part of her brain missing. Her sister was born with hip issues and had to spend a year as a toddler in a cast. While the cast helped, she still has some trouble with her hip. Both these children were born to a father, my cousin who grew up on Muriwai Drive and would often come to stay at our house at Marshalls Road. With that said, our whanau understand that we have a lot to be grateful for. We know the stories of those women who have had up to seven miscarriages and we're never able to have their own biological children and the ones whose families who have lost children to cancers and other horrific diseases. We know about how our friends and extended families have lost their mothers and fathers at a young age to diseases that are usually seen in those much older. And we have seen the impacts of the emotional toll that these issues have taken on our community. We suspect that all these issues relate back to the poisons that were used at the mill that have filled our fenua and still reside in the bottom of our waterways, but we have never been able to prove it. Apart from reports that were included in swap submission to this inquiry, which were undertaken by good people wanting to help in their own way, we have never been asked about the impact on us and there's no research to prove why we've had to suffer these afflictions. And so as far as I'm concerned, this lack of care from the state and its associated ministries perpetuates the trauma that our parents and their counterparts have had to take on. And if it continues, it'll be our children and their children that will be left to deal with it. This is something I cannot tolerate and I do not want this fight to be my son's legacy.
Tenakaotaka toa, my name is Madam Akook. I am the co-chair of Sawmill Workers Against Poisons. I am the daughter of the late Joe Harawera, former swap chair. My identity as Ngatiawa family places me to Maturanga Waiwai. I am the mukapuna of Huhana Teherewaka, Te Arapapa Rihona, Koa'uarawera, Pari Piki'au Merito and Te Afia Huarapana. I am the daughter of Pari Harawera. I am the mother to Tianiwa, Waiharakiriki and Na'utu Pari Piki'au Cook. And I am the grandmother to Koopa and Kaia Arahanga Cook. I was born in nineteen seventy-four and grew up and lived at Sixteen Marshalls Road, now known as Mill Road. My parents, Joe and Pari, raised my brother and I in a one-bedroom flat in a village-type complex of homes built to house sawmill workers and their families. Our fari was dusky pink in colour and it backed onto one of two railway trunk lines which led directly into the vicinity of the Fakatani Sawmill. My younger brother and I were both breach births and our mum suffered quite severely to carry us to full term. We were asthmatic, suffered respiratory problems and had eczema. And at one point there, my dad thought we were going to lose my brother as a baby because of his respiratory condition. Mum had previously suffered multiple miscarriages before I came along, but this was also the start of a very long line of health issues for mum, her body and her wellbeing. During those early years, mum knew no different. She accepted this for what it was and was unable to make any connections at that time to the sawmill and just lived her life to the conditions of the day as a housewife and homemaker. My brother and I would often venture over the fence on the train side of the dunes of sawdust or climbing pellets, building huts and so forth. It was truly our playground. My dad worked as a tablehand grader and then he moved on to what was called the green chain. It is here, in the form of seriously lacking health and safety practices that would spark a thirty-year battle for justice and recognition for sawmill workers and their whanau. Like Carla, I remember the extreme flooding on our property, both front and back sections, covered in water and it would stay like that for days on end. The times my mum would walk to and from the mill at night to work as a cleaner and the time she washed our clothes on the daily with dad's work gears and the old hand wringer washing machines. Mum always maintained the certain odour that would come off dad's clothes. But when you don't know what it is that you could potentially be dealing with, then it just becomes the accepted norm. Another memory is, I recall quite distinctly, we would gorge ourselves literally with the grapes that grew in abundance on our fence line. We also had a kuri, a dog named Lady, who one day ended up with unexplained sores all over her body, which she died from eventually. We lived on Mill Road for a few years until my parents finally bought their own home in Owatapu. Fast forward the years and in the last twenty, twenty-five, what we see and have experienced has been insurmountable in terms of the impact on health and wellbeing of whanau, the health and wellbeing of papatu'anku and the health and wellbeing of our community. I want to shine a light more specifically on the women who associated to this ko'apapa as a spouse, partner, daughter or mukapuna of a former sawmill worker and coming to know and understand this paitzuni called pentachlorophenol, PCP. Dad always made the reference that papatu'anku could see us healing ourselves and in turn she might also heal herself. As wahine mai connected to this ko'apapa, the harm is catastrophic because the harm has disrupted fakapapa. So when I think of my mum, losing her babies wasn't just a thing that happened. Fakapapa was lost, that unknown potential was lost. Why? Because the environment we lived in, ate from, socialised in, worked in, gathered at, enjoyed ourselves with was actually killing us. While PCP is no longer used in New Zealand sawmills, will widespread recognition ever occur that this substance is the cause of health outcomes for the generations to come? Because my reality tells me that PCP has left a deadly legacy of harm. There is a trauma here and an injustice that has been grossly inflicted upon papatu'anku and the inextricable links between environmental health and the health of wahine mai who are connected to this ko'apapa. My own health has somewhat been a bit of a mixed bag and after having my second child in two thousand and two, I had numerous gynaecological issues and procedures, treatments to resolve ongoing uncontrollable and painful periods, multiple abnormal smears and distressing days of feeling completely helpless and unhappy. Finally, after being told I was too young for hysterectomy, I was given a Marina device and two-thirds of my cervix was removed at age thirty-one. I was starting to resemble my mum. For me, a foregone conclusion and I unequivocally connect to the harm and legacy of contamination poisoning. My two adult daughters, who were also born with the effects of asthma and eczema and were generally sick kids themselves, one has outgrown the conditions the other has not. Both of my mukapuna are asthmatic and one has eczema, but all of them have grown up in a smoke-free fari environment. My brother, who is now forty-five years old and disturbingly fit and well, has no children, which is a shame because he would make a super awesome father. Mum now lives with stage one lung cancer, thyroid dysfunction, high blood pressure. She is sixty-six years of age and weighs a minuscule forty kilos. Mum recalls her life as a young mother and wife. She won't admit it, but she has tremendous strength and resilience. I asked her a question for some mahi I was doing back in twenty eighteen and it was about Manahuahini and leadership. And I said, do you think Manahuahini is relevant today? And she replied, I don't even know what that is. I guess it would be to everyone's mui'a, having to find the courage and confidence to endure those tough times. Look after your whanau is something that all women then and now should be proud of. I quite just kehatchings, perhaps one of the hardest legacies of colonisation for Maori women is the effect it has on the perceptions of ourselves. So when considering the environmental impacts and the imposition of chemical poisoning and trauma to papatu'anku and wahine mai, women like my mum had all these disruptions. Some you could see and some you could not, but it affected her ability to live a full quality and healthy life. My dad said, all he wanted to do was to go to work, make a living and support his whanau. They did not sign up to be poisoned. They did not sign up to bring these chemicals home to their families. They did not sign up to die prematurely. They did not sign up to endure pain and extreme mamai to their bodies and to their mental wellbeing. They did not sign up to have their whanau and marital relationship stressed. They did not sign up for their fenua, awa and ecosystems to be poisoned. They did not sign up to leave a legacy of poison move from one generation to the next. And they did not sign up to cause this level of insidious trauma to papatu'anku through contamination and dioxin poisoning. They did not sign up to be pushed, shunned, shut down, ignored, criticised, abused, embarrassed or treated, but they are talking through a hole in their head. These are our men, our fathers, our sons, our brothers. This is also our mums, our daughters, our nannies, our aunties, our sisters. This is me and I want justice because I reject the idea, the thought that one day my mukas will ask me, why didn't I do more? This is about re-examining the bringing together of two bodies of knowledge, Mata'anga Maori and Western science, to address the issues around chemical sensitivity of our whanau and our fenua. Kia ora.
I believe Swap wanted me to say a few words here. I'll just give a hello to Merial there, my workmate at Greenpeace when I actually wrote The Deadly Legacy in nineteen ninety-one, which really has become terribly true. So I just wanted to say a couple of things on why this has gone unheeded and nothing being done about it. Just to explain that dioxins have, put it this way, two benzene rings joined by oxygen and chlorines around them. And a pentachlorophenol is half of one of these things. And so when they made pentachlorophenol, which they basically did by putting chlorine through, some of those early PCPs were up to one part per million contaminated with dioxin, which is an incredibly high level that we know. So those early ones were very, very contaminated. But dioxin itself, having these two benzene rings and chlorines around, comes in many different forms. And essentially what they do is, when they are fully occupied, they don't stick to anything, but they, in their what are called codegenes or different forms, they stick to the DNA and the RNA, but like jigsaws. And essentially, the most simple way of saying it is they stuff up the software of life. They stop the proper functioning in the cells and the making of various proteins by just clicking into that very minute small stage and disrupting that stuff. So the outcomes that we have and have known from it, which, just, you know, just everything that's been described, you know, a whole lot of alterations in our metabolic pathways, body weight loss, you know, thymoids atrophying, impaired immune responses, skin lesions, developmental reproductive effects, growths of cancers. All of these things are caused because as the body develops, they're all mediated through hormones and protein formations and cell instructions. Well, if you get this essential software being bugs, we know what happens on a computer. Well, essentially, that's what we're doing in our body. And unfortunately, we don't have the IT people who can come along and clean it out because these things are persistent and build up in our bodies. And, but because, you know, the work's been done in animals. We know it's, there's only one substance known to man and that's botulism toxin that's more poisonous. But we've proved all these effects in animals, but of course you can't do conducted trials on humans. And chemical companies and insurance companies and health departments all demand that you can prove this caused that, this exposure caused that cancer. And because it's really this generalised disruption, we know it does do this, but they hide behind this defence, which actually is a totally incorrect mathematically, ethically, scientific defence. There is so much evidence out there, it is unequivocable. This has caused all of these things, and I put it in terms of climate denial. You know, we now know unequivocally humans are causing the planet to warm. We now know unequivocally these contaminants are causing these effects, but it suits the people because, you know, if you admit this, then people are responsible and you have to clean up lands and that costs money and, you know, suddenly they get all defensive about this, as we all know. So really, who's paying the price? You've just heard that terrible price that's been paid, and that's just, you know, a couple of families. When we toured the country in 1994, we heard people like this from all over the country saying exactly the same stories. There are thousands of people who've suffered alone and without the knowledge and without the support and the amazing work that Swap have done. It's the only place in the country, thanks to Joe and Kiriama and all the Swap workers, despite all what's happened to them, that they've also got us this far. So, all I can do is back to 100% what they've said and said this needs taking seriously. This needs a hefty impetus to get structural change and response to this. So, thank you very much for the work that you are doing. Kia ora.
Kia ora, just to say that that's the end of our presentation. We have three recommendations, and just to thank the courage of those stories to being shared, a mahiki au koitou i te whanau. The three recommendations briefly in their announcement, two, one, to recognise and provide for the harm caused to our workers and their whanau through the ACC Act through Schedule Two. The second is to identify the contaminated sites, to monitor them, to know them, so that the communities know of them all around Aotearoa. And the third is to heal the land, and they are using Mahtaranga Maori as well as Western science. So, kia ora mai tātou, over to you guys.
Thank you ever so much, Erin, for coordinating that very powerful set of presentations, and thank you to the Swap representatives and the whanau that have just, it's just been, it's so emotional to just listen to these stories and the experiences that you've shared. So, we very much appreciate you sharing those, and, you know, it's a shame that we haven't got longer to discuss all of these complex issues together. But I'll just, I'll hand over now to the commissioners, but I think overriding really the issue for us is that we need to have more time and more events like this to be able to allow people's voices to be heard, which have just not been heard for so long, and it's just heartbreaking. So let's hope that this is a stepping stone to something more, you know, more meaningful and more a progress, a stepping stone to some meaningful progress. Maryall, did you want to start?
Yes, thank you. Kia ora to you all, and thank you for your immense courage and passion in bringing this forward. Hello to you, Gordon, this is very hard for me to speak without emotion as well, I have to say. Hello to you, Gordon, and also to Catherine. A few years ago, I was present in Geneva when the Stockholm Convention on Persistent Organic Pollutants banned PCP globally, and I thought of you all. I thought of you, Gordon, I thought of Joe, I thought of you all. New Zealand was there cheering on, supporting the ban of PCP. In fact, New Zealand was one of the early countries to ban it. So, New Zealand knows the cost of PCP, but the failure to address it in your lives and your communities and your land is absolutely outrageous. And you can be very sure that our recommendations, that we will take up all of your recommendations and look further as well. I mean, one of the ways I would like to look further is, why do we have a timber industry based on toxic chemicals? This is something, we can't, we've got rid of PCP, but we're using other toxic chemicals. We keep on creating short-term fixes to a problem that actually just perpetuate the problem further and further down the chain, but I won't go on with my hobby horse any further now, but thank you so much for all of your input. Kia ora.
Yeah, tena koutou, na mahi nui, kia koutou. We're really grateful for all of the evidence, and I know it sounds silly, but from my point of view, it's like if we didn't have it, we couldn't report on it, right? We need, we needed your story, and I was so grateful because our report would be poorer without being able to mention, you know, tell talk of your stories, right? So, I mean, I think this is one of the biggest environmental justice travesties in Aotearoa, right? And I know yours has been the visible one, when I did actually read, I mean, I've watched the Green Chain, I've read nearly all of Erin's, the papers that were submitted, Gordon's Greenpeace report, all of that, and it's just absolutely mind-boggling that there are still these hundreds of more sites around New Zealand where exactly the same thing, that hasn't got Sawmill Workers Against Poisons, you know, people and groups all around, and it's like, oh my goodness, we need, yeah, so many, I'm not going to start on my hobby horse of all of the different kinds of solutions, but adding, I like the way it told talk was the mental health testimony we had from yesterday, it's very under-recognised effect, and joins the fenua and the tamata, right? That it just, and I mean, all the five points that Erin mentioned were hitting the nail on the head from my point of view. So, I have already jotted down, as an academic and lawyer, it's more like research project notes, but a big one is exactly what Gordon identified, which I had written down, this problem of causation in law. Our legal history, which is developed through, over time, through precedent, right, hasn't changed to deal with the fact that our science hasn't kept up with the problems that we face today. So if the science hasn't kept up, judges are going to have to find another way to deal with, to solve these kinds of problems if it comes before judges, for example. Politicians haven't dealt with it yet, so we have to have, it's like thinking bigger of how you can address responsibility and to do, and to solve the problems when our legal tools haven't actually kept up and aren't fit for purpose. So that's actually, that's really one of the biggest problems you've had. I think maybe pure racism has been another problem after watching the Green Chain, you know, the jobs that were fit for Maori and horses, best quote of the thing, that's really sad. So that hints an environmental justice issue. It's not just environment, it's people involved. So I think there's a lot that needs to be said, and I'm really grateful that we have been given the chance to hear your stories and to be able to say something about it. Kia ora tātou.
Thank you, everybody. Recognise that we're running slightly over inevitably our schedule, but if we agree to have just 45 minutes lunch break, then we can get back to the schedule after lunch. Are there any final questions from the commissioners for the Swap presenters today before we thank them again?
Go ahead.
You go ahead, you go ahead, Mataru, you go.
Just quickly, I'm grateful that fellow commissioners have been so articulate in their responses because I am absolutely speechless. The power of this testimony is overwhelming, and I'm grateful for the personal stories and grateful to Erin for whittling down the recommendations to just three to make it easier for us to comprehend in the face of this powerful testimony. So thank you.
Oh, Kia ora, I'll just quickly get in there then, and just to, again, thank you so much for your testimonies, and I'm speechless too. And I just want to really acknowledge Mato Joe Hatawera because I knew him from the heading, I've known him over the years, and just to acknowledge that his foresight and this legacy that he left to continue that fight. And we were brought up, just, I actually didn't think about it until your evidence came through and that we live right next to a sawmill and we were growing up too, so, and some of the, the health issues that have been mentioned, you know, my family have suffered the same thing, and it's only because of your testimony that that's become a lot clearer for me. So, norerit de whanau, na mahi arohanoi kia kauta kato, tena kauta, tena tātukato.
Well, thanks again for the speakers from the Swap group. We really appreciate your time and your very valuable, just heartbreaking testimonies. And certainly, we need to think about how to allow more voices to be heard in some way, face to face even, in the future. So let's close the morning, and we'll have a 45-minute break now, so we're back at one o'clock to listen to some more testimonies. And thank you very much again to our attendees and our commissioners, and we'll see you very soon.